All right, we'll call the City Council's special meeting agenda for August the 8th, 2022 at 5:00 PM to order roll call and certification of quorum. Madam Secretary, I'll certify that we have a quorum present with all members, with the exception of Member Hernandez. He's probably parking as we speak. Moving forward, citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments on this special meeting? None, so we'll move into executive session under Texas Government Code, I-51.071, consultation with the city attorney, legal consultation regarding land development. So with that, we will adjourn, and we hope our exec session is no more than 10 or 15 minutes. We'll be back in and move forward in our workshops. We'll recess at 5:01. City Council returned from executive session at 5:18. No action item on this executive session, so we will move to adjournment at 5:18. All right, now, I think they need a few seconds to switch over from one meeting to the next.
All right, Mayor, we are live. I'll give you a countdown here. Three, two.
All right, we will open and call to order this City Council workshop meeting agenda for August 8th, 2022 at 5:19 PM. Roll call and certification of quorum. Madam Secretary, I will certify, we do have a quorum, and all members of the City Council are present. Moving forward in our agenda, citizens' comments. Were there any comments received for this meeting? Seeing none, we will move to the purpose of the workshop. Presentation and discussion on the Pearland Recreation Center and Aditorium background and 2022 performance report. And with that, we'll turn it over to staff for staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your extra time. It struck us that with our recreation center and auditorium that's been in place for a number of years, and, you know, questions and comments that come up on occasion, it would behoove all of us to have a common background of information in terms of background on the logic of the facility and its performance. Has been affected by COVID, but has been meeting the stated performance objectives from a cost recovery standpoint. And so tonight, we wanted to go through that with you. And we also have representatives from the Parks Advisory Board that are here that are going to add some perspective as well. But I'll turn it over to Carrie, and she will lead you through the meetings and presentations. Carrie?
Thank you so much. Good evening, Council. We're excited to be here to talk about the performance of the recreation center and auditorium, and also to share about some really exciting things that have been happening in the facility. Also joining me this evening is Kevin Carter, our Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation, and two of our Parks Board members, the Chair of our Parks Board, Dennis Jackson, and Heather Baker. I'm going to start out by talking a little bit about the background. I want to share a little bit about the facility, why it was built, and how it was funded. In 2005, the Parks and Recreation Department developed its Parks and Recreation Master Plan to establish policy direction and meet the current and future needs of the community. The goals and objectives that were identified in the plan were developed through council and citizen feedback that were received at various stakeholder meetings, focus group discussions, and from a variety of citizen surveys. The residents were asked what types of parks and recreation facilities they would like to see created or improved to enhance the quality of recreation within the community. The findings revealed that an indoor recreation facility and a swimming pool was the number one priority for indoor recreation. At that same time, Pearland ISD also recognized the need for an auditorium to help support their rapidly growing district. PEDC recognized the potential economic impacts this project could have on local businesses through additional visitors to the Pearland area. PEDC has expressed that a community recreation center and auditorium would be an asset that could be marketed to both existing and new companies, and would show our community's commitment to providing first-class recreation amenities that many companies desire for their workforce. In addition to Pearland ISD and PEDC, other organizations such as Pearland Aquatics, Bay Area Stars Dive Team, Pearland Gymnastics, and the Texas Special Olympics all advocated for a facility that would provide required space to host practices and local, regional, and statewide events and competitions. In May of 2007, Pearland voters passed a $16.2 million bond referendum to fund construction of the recreation center and auditorium. It was a standalone item on the ballot that passed by 56.4% by the voters. The project was ultimately developed through a joint venture between the city, the school district, and PEDC. In addition to the $16.2 million voter-approved funding, Pearland ISD contributed $3.5 million plus the seven acres of land that the building was built on. PEDC contributed an additional $1.5 million. So in total, the $21 million project began design in 2007 and was completed in 2010. Immediately following the 2007 bond election, staff proceeded with developing an inter-local agreement with Pearland ISD that was adopted by City Council unanimously in 2007. The term of the agreement was for 25 years and will expire in 2032. As I mentioned previously, PISD contributed the $3.5 million for the facility, as well as the land, which played a contributing factor in the location where the facility was built. According to the interlocal agreement, the city pays for general operating costs for the facility for things such as chemicals, custodial services, utilities, as well as most of the preventative, or as well as the preventative maintenance and most of the general maintenance costs. The city and the district equally share the cost of significant maintenance items, which are defined as any maintenance items or repairs over $15,000. The city is also responsible for paying for the majority of the staffing cost of the facility. However, PISD does pay for 20% of the aquatics manager's salary and the cost for the lifeguards needed to guard the pool during Pearland ISD's use. Any revenue that is generated within the facility that is for Pearland ISD programs, such as, you know, for really large meets, sometimes there's a gate fee, sometimes there's concession fees that are received, and all of that revenue belongs to the school district. Likewise, any revenue that is generated by the city for programs or rentals that the city coordinates, that revenue stays with the city. According to the agreement... According to the agreement, Pearland ISD has also guaranteed a minimum of five to host five meets each year, and they get access to the pool for four and a half hours each day throughout the school year for their practices. However, all of that combined, their total usage isn't, is not supposed to exceed 20% of the total hours the facility is open. So to put that into perspective, relative to Pearland ISD's actual use of the facility, during the 2021 and 2022 school year, Pearland ISD averaged about 17 lanes a week for four and a half hours each day for a total of 112 practices. And they hosted 23 swimming, diving, and water polo tournaments. While that, while the number of meets far exceeds the minimum allowed meets, their total overall usage is only about 13% of the total time that the facility is open to the public. In 2008, the Parks and Recreation Department developed its first revenue management plan and cost recovery model to help us determine the appropriate fees to charge for services such as programs, activities, and events based on the service type and to clearly define what percentage of the services should be subsidized. So according to the plan, basic public parks and recreation services where the intent is to be accessible and beneficial to all, most of that cost should be subsidized. So for example, access to just open green space or an outdoor basketball court or a dog park should be fully subsidized. Space for educational programs, shelters, and things like voting would also fall into this category and should be fully subsidized. When a service benefits a mix of public and private, the level of the subsidy would depend upon the level of public service. So for example, many beginner skill-based activities such as learn to swim, youth recreational basketball, summer camp programs, and that they ultimately save lives and develop a stronger community and therefore should be partially subsidized. Private services are more tailored to an individual and not the general public and the, and therefore that expectation would be for the full cost of that service to be passed on to the individual. So examples of 100, 100 or 100-plus cost recovery services are things like private instruction, so if you're interested in private swimming lessons, or you want to host a birthday party, or merchandise. We do sell things like basketballs and pickleball rackets and things like that. Those are 100% cost recovery because those benefit the individual that's using those. So as a department, we really strive to provide a variety of programs that fall in each area of our cost recovery model. First and foremost, we focus on public benefit, but then taking advantage of opportunities to host a mix of those 150% cost recovery programs that help us offset some of the cost of the fully subsidized programs. While membership and facility rentals at the Recreation Center and Aditorium are a component of our overall outreach to address health and wellness within the community, they're also a primary revenue generator for the facility. In accordance with our cost recovery model, the facility is also host to many non-revenue generating events and programs that are designed to meet the community needs. These events tend to lend themselves to critical emergency management response such as distribution of vaccinations or emergency relief supplies, shelters of last resort, and evacuation hubs. In addition, the Recreation Center is home to a variety of adaptive recreation programs, among other programs, that provide recreation and social connection and educational outlets for our community of the, of all abilities and socioeconomic status. Among these great programs that are offered at the Recreation Center and Aditorium are programs that promote safety, including swimming lessons, CPR, and first aid classes. Drowning is the number one cause of death in children one to four years old and the second-leading cause of death for children ages five to 14. According to the CDC, two children die every day from drowning, but with participation in formal swimming lessons, you can reduce that risk by 88% within a community. The RCN offers swimming lessons year-round at an affordable cost for children and adults along with additional learn-to-swim programs, or, sorry, along with additional water safety programs. A total of 625 children and adults have participated in our Learn to Swim program just this past year alone. Additionally, the Recreation Center and Aditorium provides meeting space for community members to discuss important issues such as crime prevention, disaster preparation. It provides safe places for children to engage in social recreation after school. It increases home values and it creates, creates opportunities for social connection and to host events that also drive tourism.
Because of the large floor plan, accessible location, the open parking layout, and customizable gathering spaces, the Pearland Recreation Center and Aditorium is far more than a gymnasium and a pool. Various Pearland community partners have worked with the city to host impactful services like food distributions, adult reading courses, staging locations, and voting locations. Here we are showing a list of the large community rentals and events that are hosted at the Recreation Center and Aditorium. Some of these rentals include the statewide gymnastics meets, a deaf community basketball tournament, numerous regional aquatic events, various volleyball and basketball events, and Special Olympics events. The facility opens its doors to many invaluable internal bookings with other city departments that would have to be rented or otherwise not provided. As seen here, a few of these include public safety trainings, emergency management trainings, and city administrative services such as human resource job fairs and providing space for our park administrative offices. In this slide, you see a snapshot of the recreational programs that we have offered to the community from June of '21 to July of 2022. We've had approximately 2,200 participants that participated in the various 261 programs such as camps, athletic programs, adaptive programs, and swim programs. Being able to offer all of these benefits and programs to the Pearland community comes with strategic planning and budgeting of operations and maintenance and recapitalization. Since the opening of the building in 2010, $1.3 million has been spent on significant repairs. This averages to be about a $110,000 annual spend at the facility. $663,561, 50% of these significant repairs have been funded through the ILA with Pearland PISD. Current and planned recapitalization include the Recreation Center chillers and the auditorium air handling replacement, which the auditorium air handling replacement has been communicated with PISD for the anticipated total cost of 3.2 million, and the design bid and construction phase services will be coming before you tonight for consideration and possible action. Utilizing the most recent facility condition assessment, the following items have also been identified for replacement in fiscal year '23. The boilers, bulkheads, dive blocks, pool heaters, replastering of the competition pool, and the sand media replacement totaling $2.69 million would be eligible for the 50% shared cost through the PISD interlocal agreement. These items have been determined to have reached the end of their useful life and the replacement of these are critical for the operations of the Recreation Center and Aditorium. Not replacing these items could risk in a failure and interruption of our high-level service that the citizens of Pearland have come to expect.
So in addition to PISD's use and the variety of trainings and events and community uses that take place within the Recreation Center and Aditorium, the halls are filled every day with facility members and day pass users. This chart is a snapshot of our Recreation Center and Aditorium's active memberships as of July 25. We currently have approximately 3,600 monthly and annual members. This chart is, it shows a comparison of our current active household and individual memberships in comparison to the facility's highest membership numbers, which was around 6,200 in 2015. The number of memberships remain pretty consistent between 2015 and 2020, and then in 2020, that's when the facility closed due to the COVID-19 pandemic. While the membership numbers are still significantly lower than our peak numbers in 2015, we're seeing a steady increase in our membership sales. Just in the last three months, our membership totals have increased by 36%. Just before we opened in 2010, staff presented a workshop to council regarding the proposed fee structure and operations planning for the Recreation Center and Aditorium. Staff researched local facility pricing as well as polled various other cities to determine the different rates that they were charging for various public facilities. During that workshop, staff received direction from council to consider a lower fee structure and allow more residents the opportunity to use the facility at a lower cost and to offer an auditorium-only membership at a reduced rate. So shortly thereafter, staff returned to council for approval of the fees. When the original fees and budget was adopted, the cost recovery was just over 53%. This chart shows the membership rates that were originally proposed in 2010, the approved annual fees in 2010, and then our current membership fees. In 2015, when our membership was at its highest, memberships were increased to align, the membership fees were increased to align with the increasing operational cost. The fee structure was scheduled to be reevaluated in 2020, however, that was the year the facility closed due to the COVID-19 pandemic. So in addition to the membership dues, the revenue collected from rentals, and the revenue that's assessed for program registrations and merchandise sales, the expenses that we incur are the cost to serve each of the revenue generating components within the facility, operate and maintain the physical facility, and the staff required to deliver programs and services according to our cost recovery model. In 2012, after the facility had been open for just over a year and had actually tracked a full year of expenses of operational revenue and expenses, two workshops were hosted with City Council regarding the operational expenses and cost recovery of the facility. In these meetings, many of the original and pre-opening numbers were discussed relative to the actual figures that were detailed over the operations since opening. The presentation included the original budget, which was approved, with the approved fees, and the resulting cost recovery. The cost recovery originally anticipated at just right at 53%. At that time, the actual was 85% for fiscal year 2011. So at that time, it was determined through a lot of discussion that 75% would be a reasonable cost recovery expectation for the Recreation Center and the auditorium. These figures at that time were determined exclusive of any utility costs and also of any public work facility maintenance cost. The cost recovery goal of 75% has been met and exceeded every year with the exception of the COVID-19 pandemic impact when the entire facility was shut down. Between 2016 and 2019, the cost recovery for operations of the facility averaged right about 90%. And then between 2020 and 2022, the cost recovery range has averaged 53%. In October of 2018, staff reported on the RCN's operations and provided an overview to council of the cost recovery for FY '16, '17, and FY '18. Due to the timing of this report, the FY '18 revenue and expenses reported were through, were only through August of that fiscal year. Those are the numbers that are reported in this cost recovery model. These figures were inclusive of utilities and they included a portion of the facility maintenance cost tracked by public works. FY '19 through FY '21, the figures reported are actual operating expenses and revenues. And then in FY '22, because we are currently in our fiscal year '22, those numbers reflect the expense and revenue estimates in the mid-year budget amendments adopted by City Council this past July. Through more efficient budgeting and expense reporting tools, we continue to track more accurate costs for utility, salary, and wages, as well as facility maintenance. In FY '21 and '22, the FY '21 and '22 fiscal years reflect the contractual landscaping maintenance cost and all full-time aquatic division personnel costs that were not previously included in these reports. Several significant events have impacted the cost recovery over the past three years. During FY '19, the activity pool heater in the auditorium unexpectedly failed, which resulted in shutting down the activity pool for an extended period of time. During the closure, we were unable to conduct any aquatic programming and had to refund just over $141,000 in membership dues to the affected members. In March of 2020, on March 13th to be exact, that is the day that the city shut down indoor recreation facilities in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. At that time, rather than just completely shutting down all operations, our department pivoted to improve our community's emotional well-being during this crazy time. We introduced alternative, an alternative of virtual programming and innovative socially-distanced special events. Our staff were reallocated to special projects and new assignments as the needs were constantly changing. And in certain periods, our lifeguards were assisting park maintenance crews in managing and preparing the green spaces for increased activity in parks and trails. The Recreation Center and Aditorium reopened with very limited amenities in May of 2020. In October 2020, membership dues were reinstated only for the members that were utilizing the facility. The remaining memberships were reinstated in January of 2021. When memberships, when memberships were reinstated in January, there were still a significant number of our members that were not comfortable with returning to the facility, and as a result, they canceled their memberships. In January 2021, our operational focus for Parks and Recreation staff also shifted tremendously to operating COVID-19 vaccination pods between the February and April of that year. As well, during that time, we operated a warming shelter, a water distribution pod during Winter Storm Yuri. So this operational shift combined with peaks in COVID-19 positive cases slowed the programming and membership recovery initiatives. However, even taking into account the significant events that have impacted our cost recovery over the last four years, the RCN operates at a net cost to the city's general fund of approximately $500,000, which is 0.4% of the total general fund expenditures. In 2022, the membership and revenue numbers are starting to trend upward as everyone adapts to the new post-COVID environment. And as I mentioned previously, we've seen an increase in 30, of 36% just in the last three months. Our Parks and Rec team are working diligently to increase participation and revenue for the facility. Marketing appropriately and running promotions is critical for increasing these, the number of memberships. Staff have developed and implemented a 12-month promotional calendar to attract new members and to retain our existing members. In addition, staff actively promote membership sales through various print and online media outlets, in-person at all Parks and Recreation events, and through partnerships with companies like HEB Academy and Groupon. So in order to reach 100% cost recovery using this year's total expenses of approximately $1.8 million and revenue of almost $1 million, the Recreation Center and Aditorium would have had to make an additional $900,000 in revenue through its operations and services. This table shows a couple of scenarios where 78% cost recovery, 85% and 100% cost recovery could be achieved and also the implications of, that that would have on facility rentals and membership rates. Once our membership numbers resume to the pre-pandemic numbers that we saw back in 2015, 2020 timeframe, if we assume that our membership numbers get back to that point and we utilize this year's expense amount, our cost recovery would be 78%. To obtain 100% cost recovery, assuming our 2015 membership levels and our current year's expenses, this would require a 32% increase in membership and rental fees. This assumes the number of memberships and rentals would remain constant, however, there's no guarantee that this would happen. Based on recent census data, about 40% of our membership have an annual household income less than $100,000. And most households, it's, it's shown that most households that make less than $100,000 are currently, with current inflation, living paycheck to paycheck. And with the rising cost of, of, you know, just basic services, the first thing to be cut is disposable income, and that includes reductions to their memberships. And so with an increased price in membership and then increased cost of, of just general cost of living, you know, we would have to assume that those membership rates would, you know, that would sustain that additional cost increase. But so the facility does run the risk of membership cancellation, fewer day pass sales, and less rentals because of the increase in price. There would also be a There would also be a need to turn away a lot of the no-cost usage for the facility to avoid any impact on cost recovery. Obtaining such a high level of cost recovery would require preference to rentals that are going to generate revenue rather than preference to that space for public service resources, outreach, and community initiatives. So with the rising operational costs due to inflation, a recent market analysis was conducted to determine if the market would support an increase in membership dues. So based on market study conducted in November, the recreation center and auditorium rates are lower than the Vic Cappenger YMCA. They're in line with most private gyms in the area and are 40% higher than those charged to residents for membership at the Sulfur, Louisiana Recreation Center. That's a facility that's designed almost identical to the RCN, different community, but facility is very comparable. For the previously mentioned reasons, deviating from the long-established council's target goal of 74% cost recovery, the above fee increases are not recommended at this time by staff. Staff instead recommend that we continue to focus on regaining our membership, that we really focus on membership sales and get our community back in the facility and, you know, keep focusing on those sales strategies that's going to allow us to do that. And then once our numbers have resumed to pre-pandemic numbers, then at that time, we conduct another market study and present recommendations with any potential recommendations to adjust fees at that point. We invited our Parks Board members here also tonight to show you, or to share with you kind of their experiences with the facility, and then they have a lot of opportunity to interact in a different capacity that we as staff do with the public. And so want to invite both of them, we'll start with Heather. Just want to invite you to share anything that you have in regards to your experiences with the facility and community feedback.
There we go. I'm not used to sitting over here. It's weird, I'll tell you that. Okay. So COVID has left its mark on the world, and as you can see in the numbers, the recreation center and auditorium are no exception. I'm sure we can all point to businesses, hobbies, philanthropy that are still trying to recover to pre-COVID levels. Parks and Recreation Team has a clear plan to regrow those memberships and renewals that have fallen over the past few years, and I'm very confident in these programs and promotions. I believe our cost recovery conversations will be very different a year or two down the road, as long as we have the excellent facilities that our residents are proud to be a part of. So speaking of COVID, my husband and I bought our home in Pearland in May of 2020, right in, as COVID was starting. That was fun. We've been told that Pearland was a really nice place to live, but we didn't really get to experience that until 2021. I was actually trimming our rose bushes when I got a text that the city of Pearland was offering COVID vaccines. At that time, it was a real challenge to find appointments. For those of you who had people you were trying to find appointments for, I'm sure you remember those days of calling and calling and calling, busy signals, people didn't answer. When you finally got through, everything was booked up. So I was really impressed that the city would be able to do that for their citizens, and I wasn't aware of any other municipalities that were doing this. But that surprise didn't compare to what I found when I arrived for my vaccine. The organization, the volunteers, the facility designated for this operation was astounding. Once I got my first shot, I signed up to volunteer as much as I could without losing my job at the time. This team was able to do such an amazing job as quickly as they did, in part because there was no red tape or partnering or scrambling to find locations to offer this service to the Pearland community. No questions of where are we going to do this, how are we going to store that, do we have to work around other, other businesses' schedules and things like that. We already had everything that we needed under one roof of the recreation center, even when bad weather threatened to slow us down and force us inside. In that time of global pandemic, the recreation center served the community regardless of cost recovery. During February '21, we also experienced one of the worst winter storms on record. So many in Pearland were impacted first by the cold temperatures, the loss of heat in their homes, and then the water issues afterwards. I know no one here wants to relive those weeks. And then there was the recreation center, ready and willing to serve as a warming center, a shelter for residents in need. And it's not just warming or cooling services the recreation center has provided, it has also sheltered our children in times of crisis as well. Just another way that the recreation center and auditorium building has served our community regardless of cost recovery. Over the years, how many Pearland teenagers, including some of your own children, have worked at and even had their first job at the recreation center? This facility is providing job training for the youth of Pearland regardless of cost recovery. And I get it, I'm not a lifelong Pearlander, I wasn't here when we had the pool at Independence Park, but boy, have I heard about it. A lot of people learned how to swim at that old pool, possibly some in this room, and I understand how the loss of that memory may cause some resentment towards the auditorium by some in the community. But the decisions made in this room are supposed to be for the good of Pearland, moving this forward, not holding this back. And I would challenge that if the men and women in your seats back then had made different choices about the maintenance of the pool, it might still be operational today. I've spoken from that podium before about needing to take care of what we've built and how just like not putting enough oil in your truck, not maintaining and investing in these facilities can turn Pearland into the city that was instead of the city of choice. The Independence Park pool should be an example to all of us of what our facilities can become when we don't take care of them. If we truly want Pearland to be the city of choice in the Houston area, then investment in facilities like the Rec Center and Auditorium and other indoor sports facilities are required to stay not just current, but ahead of the game. For city councils and boards, we have to look into the crystal ball and decide what we must do today so that we can attract the best for Pearland tomorrow. When you talk about our Parks and Rec Center and Auditorium, these are the places where Pearland's future will grow up, will learn to lead, and then one day they'll take those leadership skills to possibly even the seats you occupy today. These are the places where anyone of any ability and any age can come together and experience true community. I think that everyone in this room can agree that community is worth every penny. Thanks.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Well, first, I just want to thank everyone. I know you guys have a very long agenda tonight, so thank you very much for allowing me and Heather to come and speak. Again, my name is Dennis Jackson. I am the chair of the Parks and Recreation Beautification Board for here in Pearland. The role of the Parks and Rec Board is really to be the eyes and ears of the community for the board, or for the department and for the city council. We can speak on behalf of the community as far as what they see and what they want with their Pearland Parks and Community. I'm his chair of the board. I can certainly say that the feedback we've received from the community regarding the recreation center and the auditorium are a big hit. The investment that this city made in 2007 and continues to make year after year in the facility has made significant returns within the community and has certainly helped attract more people to come to Pearland to live. It's made it a very desirable place. Heather has already named a few of the benefits and the experiences that she's had with the Rec Center and the auditorium, and I'd just like to go over a few more. As the summer closes, I think I'd be very remiss if I didn't point out the many summer activities our citizens have been able to take part in at the Rec Center and the auditorium. When I was younger, I spent most of my summers at the YMCA, so that was pretty much unbearable heat, sun, all day long. And that's not to knock the YMCA, it's a great program, it's a great company, but I would certainly have loved to experience the type of programs we've offered our youth here in Pearland at the recreation center. The kids are able to enjoy, enjoy programs outside of the summer heat rather than bear the unbearable sun. The addition of the auditorium has also been a major plus throughout the summers. It's offered programming such as aquatic aerobics as well as swim classes that our community can take advantage of. I personally can say that these programs have been a great benefit to my family. This summer, my nieces took part for the very first time in the summer programs, and I was able to enroll my son in his first swimming classes at the auditorium. So these are benefits that people in our community would typically have to find outside of our community. This would force them to spend extra money, extra dollars, extra time, either commuting and getting memberships that may be too costly for them. Beyond the structured programs, I think the department director, Carrie, went over several things that the Rec Center provides when it comes to a cool, safe space for our younger and older members. They can come and play basketball, they can play racquetball, or they can just take a walk around the track. These are, again, amenities that are not offered in a lot of areas around Pearland. And we get all of this at an operating cost of $500,000 annually. This is kind of a drop in the bucket when you really consider it. I'm sure the cost of pens, papers, and printing, ink printers and everything else for two years costs way more than $500,000 a year. But this is a multi-use public asset that, again, is one of a kind. I know that not many jurisdictions have it. Carrie mentioned that the furthest, the closest jurisdiction that she could find was actually in Louisiana. So, and I understand the desire of the council to squeeze every bit of revenue out of the facility, but doing so could certainly come at a cost. The current cost recovery model has far exceeded the goal originally set by the council in 2012. Of course, this is before the pandemic hit. But even now, operating post-pandemic, we've shown that the average recovery is still slightly higher than that set by the city council at that time. We believe switching to our 100% cost recovery model, which would require increasing membership and rental fees, could actually have a detrimental effect and possibly result in cost recovery remaining stagnant or even being reduced going backwards. Public accommodations often get a very bad rap because their facilities are poor, outdated, and sometimes just unclean. In this situation, people would rather not even use them, even if the price is low. Here with the Rec Center and Auditorium, we have just the opposite. People want to use the Rec Center, they want to come swim at our auditorium. But with inflation affecting every other aspect of people's lives, an increase in membership and rental fees may cause many to believe they can do without a membership or that day pass, or they may just want to spend their money at a different facility where they can get specific uses. This would certainly result in a decrease in revenue, and at the same time, expenses for the department could likely increase due to the rental or lease fees it would pay in order for the many programs and community activities that we would have to have occur at another facility. I'm sure the Parks Department would welcome any new revenue generating ideas from the city council. However, I think the old saying, "If it ain't broke, don't try to fix it," really applies here. Therefore, the Parks Board joins the department against any fee increases. Thank you very much.
Thank you all both very much. We want to save enough time for discussion and questions, and I think Chairman Jackson just hit on so many of, you know, the high summary points when taking a look at the performance of the facility and the cost recovery, you know, just really, you know, keeping in mind that the impact that the facility has on the community, and it's, it's so much more than just the, you know, the membership sales and the rentals that happen in the facility. So with that, I want to turn it back to you for any additional follow-up, Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mayor Council, for your time and would appreciate any questions and comments. But again, thought it was important, the memo that went with this, 17 pages, has a lot of these same facts in here, the PowerPoints also in the presentation, so you can go back and reference that. But it was really important, we can have opinions about, you know, future and programs and so forth, but really want to establish a baseline of facts of history and performance that we can agree on that and then go from there going forward. Nothing added.
Yeah, thank you for that. Carrie, Kevin, Heather, Dennis, thank you for, I think it's a great presentation, the write-up was comprehensive, the presentation is comprehensive as well. And I think it's important from time to time that we revisit our history and how we get here. There's a lot of people in this room, maybe watching online, who will see this later that don't know the history all the way back to 2005, where this facility was the number one thing that people were asking for as far as an amenity to the community, above and beyond just the normal repair and maintenance and things that cities do. So revisiting that always helps and puts things in context. Same thing with council members as well as school board members and others. Revisiting the history, I think, helps put everything into, into context. So I appreciate all that. Do want to get to some questions and comments from council. I know Ms. Kate has asked for the floor, so.
Mayor, if I could before, I want to recognize Superintendent Burgers here and appreciate him coming. Obviously, you heard a lot about that partnership and how that's worked over the years, and as you said, the origin story of how this came to be, so.
Yes, Mr. Burger, thank you for taking some time out and being here as well, and we do questions, so I'll come back to you if you've got any questions as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Carrie, thank you so much for the presentation, and it's nice to see the board members and the board chair in, in here. Thank you. Thank you for what y'all said also. I want to ask you something on page, or slide number 19. I, the, the cost for the family per month is very high. Is that possibly wrong?
Is that 660?
That is for an annual, yes. So that is for an annual membership versus the monthly membership. And the reason that we included the annual membership rates is so you could see for a family what it would, what it would cost for the entire year. We were trying to show monthly for just an individual and then to give you some different examples. This chart isn't inclusive of all of our different memberships.
Thank you so much. I just, I wanted to.
Thank you for clarifying or asking that question.
Thank you. And, and do, do the employees take advantage of the benefit of being able to use the Rec Center?
We have currently about 261 employee, but right around 260 employee memberships, and we do see a lot of employees utilizing the facility and taking advantage of those health and wellness benefits. And then in turn, the employees that are using the facilities provide, you know, a different level of perspective and then provide, you know, that, that user experience, and it helps us to improve our level of service as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
That's somewhere, that's somewhere around 28% to 30% of our employee base that's using, using it? Is that about right?
Sounds about right, yes. And it's important to note that our employee memberships don't have an additional, you know, it doesn't have an additional cost in regards to operations.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Ms. Mayor, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Much appreciate the presentation and thank you for the history lesson and, you know, we've come a long way in Pearland and in our community and legislatively as well. We were going through some tough times today, given the effects of the COVID and things of that sort. So we're not immune to those, those issues. You know, being that I spent the last six years on school board, now I'm here on city council, I kind of have a little insight into how it affects the school in various ways and, as well as, you know, no new revenue for the cities and things of that sort. So I guess the question is for Clay. Where does the, the cost associated with the auditorium and Rec Center, what budget does that come out of?
Right, so the Parks and Rec facilities, so our park system, the NAP Center, and the Recreation Center and Auditorium, which is inclusive of all these things, is a part of our general fund, Parks Department.
Okay. And so, you know, expenses having roughly about a 20% to 30%, depending on what type of materials you're talking about, increase in cost associated with those. You know, I don't think that city budgets are immune to that either. So on the school district side, we took a huge hit from a revenue standpoint over time because we don't have the fast-growth status that we had in years past, nor do we have the attendance for students and whatnot. And in the district, I guess the school district, we had, we're very limited. Our funding is, is very restrictive, and we don't have the flexibility of being able to move our budgetary numbers around, and I'll say this very loosely, as the city does, because again, we're restrictive on funding as well with no new revenue, no more than, what, 3.5%? Is it a 3.5% revenue max or something like?
It's the state calculation, yes, sir.
Yeah. So, so being that, I mean, we're restricted on revenue too, so I worry that we're, we're burdening our district, are burdening our city for additional repairs and costs. I mean, as you can see in the presentation, I think, I don't know what page you are on, but I'm looking through the, the deal that we had, you know, over $3 million of, of expenditures that are, that are coming out of, that are coming up, right, that we're working on currently. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's a slide that showed.
Flipping through to it right now, sorry.
That's right.
Like five or six, somewhere in there.
Yeah, is it right? Yeah. Yeah, so 6.2 over the next couple of years. So I worry, and I'm more of a planner, right? So I, I have a hard time with, I don't necessarily have a hard time with the 75% necessarily, but when we have $6 million or $3 million or whatever it is that has to come out in one chunk, that's an undue burden on, on, on our maintenance, I mean, on our operation budget as well as the school district's budget. So I want to be able to come up with some mechanism so that we don't have these huge hits over, what, 10 years or so? I mean, I think that's fair, right? I mean, I think that's fair, right? Over a 10-year period, and because, you know, cities, you know, we, we try to maximize our dollars, very difficult, given our drainage streets, roads, and other things, and as do, as do the, as does the school district. So that is where my, my comments come from. And I don't think the general public would have a really, a hard time with that. I think they, they would understand that those that are using these facilities on a more regular basis would be, be the, would bear some of the burden, or more of the burden than others in the city, so. That's all, that's all my comments. Thanks.
Questions, comments? Mr. Kamkar?
All right. Well, thank you to the staff for doing a great presentation, super informative. Thank you for Chair Jackson and Member Baker for coming by. I know it's, you guys work too, and you guys are here right at dinnertime, so I appreciate you guys coming through. I had a question. The, there's a reference to significant maintenance cost of 1.3 million, which I guess those would be, maybe out of the norm. What are the normal, let's call it yearly or on a five-year scale, cost for supplies, materials? What is that cost that we're enduring every year?
That'd be the operating expenses that was in the graph? I mean, that's basically it? Yeah. And, and keep in mind, so if you want to go to that graph, I would say that that's descriptive of those kinds of things, Member Kamkar. And then when you see that, you just have to keep in mind that all the other things that, that we use that facility for and provides for, so that operating costs, correct if I'm wrong, is total for the facility, not broken out for the administrative overhead. If we didn't have that building, we'd be somewhere else, and we would work somewhere else, all the other public programs, et cetera, et cetera.
Oh, just, it's hard to see, and I don't know if the public can see this, but.
Million nine, call it?
Yeah, on the, the 2020 number, it's right around 1.9. On the lower number going to 2016, it's 1.7, almost 1.8. So let's just call it between 1.8 and 1.9, with the exception of obviously 20 of the COVID year. The revenue's pretty far off. It's 800 or 900,000 off. The, the highest number you had was 1.4, so that narrow gap, I'm sorry, 1.5 in 2016. The, the concern I have, and I think we need to explain, we're going to put possibly $6 million here in the next two or three years from a capital project point of view. Even in our best year, we're, we're bringing in 1.5. And so I don't, I agree, we need to maintain this asset somehow, some way. My, my question to the council before we move forward and really add those dollars is what are other proposals on the operations piece? Are there other proposals on the operations piece? My request and my hope would be that they would still allow the school district to continue its current three or four hours a day for swimming and for activities, but what does the other operator look like or feel like? Are they going to be better on expenses or, or better on revenue? I think it just, every, every $800,000 is a penny. If you're upside down, a penny or a penny and a half, I mean, that's, that's, you're starting your, your budget at a deficit, and your, your tax rate is, is a penny in the hole. And so those are things that I think we have to explore prior to putting the $6 million in. I think the $6 million is warranted, but I think we have to put as many things on the discussion table and say, are there better ways to operate this or privatizing a piece of this? I think we could go and get somebody who would put in 75 or 80% of operations, and we put in 10 or 15, that's a better job for the city in terms of expenses, and maybe somebody else comes in there on the operations piece. And so those are just the things that I think about. I think we need to put capital investment in here. I just don't know what that looks like right now. I don't know that doing it the same way is sustainable. Now we have to put $6 million to Member Barry's point in here in the next two years, you know, and it may take us a while to get those dollars back. Those are my thoughts. Thank you, Mayor.
Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. So I've got, we've got approximately 10 years remaining on the original agreement with ISD. And so that's, at that 10-year point, what is our plan once that expires? Because I'm, I'm looking at this, right, so we've got about 25% of the total cost to build the facility is going into in the next, like, two, three years. What is our plan at the end of this agreement? Are we looking at a new facility? Are we looking to just continue maintaining it? What is that cost? Do we have an idea? I'm kind of curious what that plan is.
So ultimately, our relationship with the, with Pearland ISD, we want to remain a mutually beneficial relationship with the district. And the purpose of the facility was to house both, community recreational services as well as a place that, you know, Pearland ISD can be proud of and host, you know, really large events that aren't, that you're not able to host with just a, you know, like a swimming pool that's attached to a school. And we want to continue that relationship with them, and we've already started talking about what's working, what's not, and, and how we move forward with that partnership with the district. And so as we move into, you know, 10 years from now, we have to continue to evaluate, you know, the history, what has been happening, what the intentions of the facility are, and then, you know, move forward in that direction cohesively.
I, I would like to kind of maybe start thinking about that. Are we gonna, because I mean, if we're spending, you know, 20, 30% of the next two years of the original cost to build the facility over the next two years, I mean, if we're spending another 5 million or 10 million over the next, you know, five or 10 years, you know, if that adds up to 15 million or whatever the numbers, I don't know what it is, but whatever we anticipate it to be, what the cost would be if, you know, there was just a new facility, or what, you know, as Member Kamkar pointed out, if there was somebody who was interested in doing a, some type of a, you know, program where they operate the facility, we've had talk about leaseback facilities, things like that. I'm just trying to get ahead of this, trying to think a little bit farther into the future. And then on page 18, I think you had mentioned, and correct me if I'm wrong, Carrie, that prior to '21, we didn't include the aquatic manager and the landscaping in these numbers. So if we adjusted the operating expenses for the years prior, would we, would the cost recovery numbers move down, I'm assuming?
They would go down a little bit. We, we chose to keep the '16, '17, and '18 numbers consistent with what has been reported previously, just for effective record-keeping. But yes, if you went back and adjusted those, that would change that cost recovery.
If it's possible to get an update with that, as well as to break out the orange bar to show, because I think you said there were some maintenance that was in this as well, so maybe we could get that broken down to show what actual admin versus maintenance would be. I think that would kind of open a few, clarify a few things. And then really thankful for our Parks Board members being here. Dennis and Heather, appreciate your thoughtful input on this. I started in the Parks Board, so I know you, you get a lot of direct input from the community, so thanks for that. On the cost recovery comparisons, was this the, the only strategy that was considered? Or, I mean, have we looked at potential different directions? Because I, I'm thinking, there was a comment from the memo that kind of jumped out at me, where a gentleman, I think, came and spoke and made a comment about he didn't think it was fair that employees got a discount or memberships where the, the taxpayers are paying for it and they didn't get that same deal. I would kind of like to see, I mean, if it's possible to go a different direction to where we made it even more accessible, not necessarily looking at trying to just increase membership rates, but are there other ways that we can try to drive revenue? I, I know that there are, I'm sure businesses similar to this that do membership drives all the time, lower the rate, end up having more people come in, and then obviously those people forget that they're paying their 20 bucks a month, whatever it is. So are these the only strategies that were considered, or is just raising the rate potentially? Or was there anything else?
There are other things that you can consider, such as removing the non-resident membership rate. There's a lot of resident, or a lot of households that live within a very close proximity of the Recreation Center and Auditorium that are not Pearland residents, and they pay a significantly higher rate if they choose to join the facility. So that's something to consider. We did not run those numbers, but we were happy to run them. And then you mentioned, you know, increased, you know, rentals, things like that. As you, as you reprioritize to bringing in revenue generating rentals, and that reduces the amount of space that's available for some of those community, the, the events that, or the rental space that benefits the community.
Sure. I just maybe like to see one or two more strategies, other than just let's increase the rate, if that's possible. For sake of time, I'll yield there. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Mercosa?
Yes, thank you, staff and Parks Board members for giving this presentation this evening. I'm curious to know, pre-COVID, we were kind of in the 80 to 90% between the expenses and revenues. Through COVID, it dropped down to 37, and then we're about 54%. What are we looking at right now to be able to attain that 80 to 90? What timeline, year, two years? What are y'all's flavor on? What y'all think there?
That is a very tricky question, because every assumption that we have made has changed with, you know, just coming out of the pandemic. The patterns for program registrations are very different than what they looked like before, and then just when we think that, you know, COVID is behind us and we expect our numbers to jump back up, and then a new wave comes through and we see a big, big loss. And so it is very difficult to, to pinpoint an exact amount of time with so many changes, so many things changing right now in, in our world. We are focusing very heavily on our marketing strategy right now, really getting out into the community, making sure that everyone knows that the Recreation Center exists and that they understand the benefits of the facility, and we're very actively promoting it and trying to increase membership sales. As well as that, we're focusing very heavily on membership retention, so we make sure that we're retaining our members that we currently have. So as far as a number of years, I mean, I would, ideally, I would love to be back there in the next year to two, but I can't, we cannot pinpoint that based off of just what's happening. What I can share is that, you know, just in the last three months, we've seen a 36% increase, where before that it was a little bit slower. So I hope that that kind of helps. We're working, we're working very, very diligently to bring those numbers back as quickly as possible.
I understand. As far as in your marketing, what type of marketing, what are y'all doing? What are y'all doing to find out what type of actual conversion from what you're doing to market to what you're actually capitalizing on your customers walking in?
So one of the things, just getting face-to-face with the members, utilizing our special events to get face-to-face and being able to sign people up for memberships there. Our communications department has been working with us to target through our social media promotions, different areas of the community specifically. Those have proven to be very effective, and then our Groupon promotions have, have had quite a bit of results. And then just continuing to, you know, look at the, the community and how we reach them and how we bring them into the facility.
All right. Thank you. Good deal. Woody?
Yeah, going back in time on this, when we were looking at it, and everything, we didn't know exactly how, how it was going to come out, but we, we looked at it also across the board of, of what happens during that period of time, and different events and stuff like that, those people in, inside the city to spend the night, you know, in a hotel, or does it take them to a restaurant and what have you here? So it's a lot to be considered. We didn't know how long it would take us to come in to even get to a breakeven number. You know, I mean, that's just one of the things that we had to work with in order to do that, but it was an opportunity to do it. So the way that we ended up looking at, you know, this would be, you know, what does it do for the entire city? Does it put heads in the bed, and does people go to the restaurant or eat, you know, and different things like that? An overview of that, it's hard to track those dollars, you know, for that like that. But I think, you know, it's, it's, when we looked at it, we didn't know if it ever gets to 110%, you know, of the actual cost over the board of it. But it does, the significance of it, of what all it's doing for the city in bringing people in, I think, you know, it's just doing a good job.
Good deal. I'll finish up with this. I, I think maintaining the 75%, I, I didn't hear anybody wanting to really kind of move away from that at this point. I think we've got to get back there before we can then make the decision, do we want to take the step to get to 100%, especially with, with last year, and then hopefully this year, we're trending in the right direction. Hopefully, we see a, a couple of more months at that 30% range of increase, and we'll be getting back closer to that 75%, hopefully in '23. One thing to consider, I, I talked to a boutique fitness center yesterday, owners of that, and of course, their, their membership's a lot more expensive than this, but they're seeing membership way down, and it's 100% tied to inflation. Cost of gas, fuel, all of those, just cost of, of monthly, there, you know, people looked at it and said, "I can cut this, I've got to have gas to go to work." So even with people, you know, over $100,000, I mean, there, there is a threshold of saying, "I've got to maintain what I've got, I can maintain," and they're looking to cut, and it's gym memberships and things of the like that are, that are cutting. So looking at this, I, I, you know, we're coming out of COVID, which we shut down and people stopped going indoors and doing these types of things. Coming out of COVID, we're hitting, we're now hit with this inflationary time. One thing, it would be interesting, and I'm not sure how to run this model, I'd be interested to see if you cut 10%, not a great amount, but a, a 10% cut in, in memberships, would, would that be enough that, number one, you want to maintain your, your current membership? Would that be enough to make sure that we're maintaining? But would that add a little bit of fuel to getting back to that 75% quicker, getting that overall base of membership closer to that 6,000, 6,500 range? Would it happen faster if we were to go in and say, "Let's, let's look at a cut?" And again, I'm not sure how you make those assumptions and how you, how you do that. But because of the inflationary times, we could certainly use it, and from a marketing standpoint, we could use, we're in inflationary times, we've seen and heard, so we're going to lower, lower rates 10% or 8% or 12%, whatever the number is. That might be a strategy to use and, and actually, you know, maintain and increase. So just something to think about.
Mayor, I've got the tagline for you already. Let us help you fight inflation of your waistline and... On your page, it's hard, Carrie.
Mr. Burger, do you have anything to add from the ISD? Sure, if you could, it'd be great.
I echo that this was a great report from the Parks Department, a great presentation. Obviously, the ISD has its own budgetary concerns. We have had conversations about this contract that was signed, I think, before most of us were here, and we have been working with the Parks Department and the city to maintain a partnership. Our swim program really enjoys the auditorium. We do not have a pool in Pearland ISD, but it is kind of, over the first nine years, it was 1.3 million, and we contributed half of that as it was shown, but over the next two years, it's 6 million, and we are being asked for $3 million of that. That is a big hit to the Pearland ISD. So we are in conversations, and we are trying to move forward to make sure that the city and the ISD continue a partnership, but swallowing that $3 million over the next two years is difficult for us, and so we will continue to have that conversation about the contract. We did have conversation about moving from the contract as agreed to a kind of rental partnership, and I believe that was also listed in the written presentation that you have. So as we continue these discussions, hopefully we can reach a resolution to where the community and the ISD can continue to use the facility. We do get a need for it, we have a need for it, we appreciate the partnership, but it is a unplanned-for hit with $6 million coming in the next two years.
Right. Thank you for that, and I, I think all of us agree with that. So we, we at the city have a great partnership with Pearland ISD, not just over this facility, but just in general. It's a great partnership, it's a great partnership with Alvin ISD on that end of town as well. We have great ISD and, and great partnerships all the way around, so we, we really do appreciate that. Anything left on your end?
Yeah, just real quick, appreciate everybody's time. I think it was very helpful to get that history and, and shared knowledge. And as you said, Mayor, you know, I think, I think at some point, it's, give us a number and we'll perform. I mean, the number to now has been that 75, and we've been hitting that but for this last two. So, and I understand there's some, we can use some more cost accounting, et cetera, in here.
I take it from the standpoint that nobody said moving away from it. I think you maintained the 75, that's at least what I'm hearing. I think we have to give back to 75% before we can even have a discussion of going to 100%. I don't think you would, I don't think you would just automatically say, "Let's go to 100% cost recovery," until we get back to at least where we were.
And the other thing I'd say is, correct me if I'm wrong, Trent, but we did do a facilities analysis, and so, you know, it's time to do these, and they're necessary. We don't really have a choice, but we don't anticipate that this is going to be, you know, 10 years of this kind of thing. This is just time that these things have come, and they're big hits, and you got one tonight, so that's where we're at.
Okay. With that, we're going to move to adjournment of this workshop at 6:24. And with that, we will switch the tape and be ready around 6:30. And with that, we will switch the tape and be ready around 6:30.